...was designed around this outlet pipe, but Gil Ramirez was able to get the pipeline from Monument Lake functional to the water treatment plant, eliminating the need for the bypass. We were able to just straighten out the end. That work is complete and Gil is back on North Lake now. He's not running off the monument. The water quality out of North Lake is much higher than Monument Lake. So he's happy about that. The contractor is now beginning to construct the filter drain that will go to the bottom of the stability valve. That will probably take him most of the month of June. It's a combination sand and gravel filter that gets cut, that gets covered with embankment material that's in places as much as 40 feet high. Spillway is not expected to start construction until probably late July, early August. The pipe is currently being made. Contractor's currently on schedule, maybe even a day or two ahead of schedule under the guise of his schedule. So happy to answer any questions specifically about the project or about progress.
Do you have any concerns at this point in time that with the schedule, you said he, the construction company, is on schedule? Do you have any concerns whatsoever that he would not be completed by the end of November of 2013?
If we review that schedule each week, like Tuesday, review the schedule today, and the minute he is behind schedule, we'll notify him and require him to give us a revised schedule. But currently, we haven't had to do that. We've been making good progress.
Can you identify, as you think about this project, what are some of the first things that you can foresee? They may be unlikely, but what would make us miss the schedule at this point?
If the spillway pipe delivery was delayed, that's a major item. I can see that causing the schedule to slip. There is no reason that it should. That pipe should have been ordered in September. It was not ordered until the month of May of 2013. It shouldn't have been ordered in September of 2012. So if the schedule isn't met, it will be on the contractor for not ordering the pipe in time with that.
What do you think the likelihood is that it won't be delivered on the-
The manufacturer's in Denver. It's a top-notch firm. I suspect that they will make it.
So at this point, you're confident that-
Right.
-that lag between November and May was not critical part of the project? But it's quickly becoming critical.
It is. I mean, the turnaround on constructing pipe is usually several months. And you know, had the pipe been ordered last fall, he could have started construction already. And it was actually scheduled to be constructed, actually pipe manufactured and installed last fall.
But yet it wasn't ordered until-
Until May, until May 23rd. Right.
Can you speak to the quality of the work that is being done?
I would say the quality to date has been really good. I have no issues with quality. We have a full-time engineer on site that inspects all the work and makes sure that we don't accept anything that's not top-quality. So if the work isn't done right, usually has to be removed. We've had something taken out. Haven't had too much fight back from some construction on that. I think sometimes every contractor gets in a hurry and they'll cut corners if somebody's not there watching.
Keep watching.
We are watching.
So I'm understanding, excuse me, I'm understanding that you are there daily or weekly at least?
I am there pretty much weekly. I have a junior level of the regular professional engineer on site every day, every minute during their working.
My question goes toward oversight.
Yes, right. And I'm there weekly and sometimes more often. Last week, I was there four days.
Thank you.
Mr. Banano?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As far as more construction on the dam, we're not going to have to drop any more of our water level like we did the first time, the five feet. If this construction keeps going down, will we have to drain any more water out of our dam?
Only what you use, the restricted level on the reservoir right now due to the dam safety issue, is five feet below the old spillway. And you'll be able to bring that water level to that point, and you'll have to keep it there until construction is substantially complete. At that time, the state should go ahead and remove the restriction, which should be next fall sometime. So you can-
Got a priority to get more water?
Yeah. It's currently less, it's currently not at the restricted level. I spoke to Gil today and he said he's putting about two and a half acre feet in the reservoir right now. He's not gaining a lot on it, but he's gaining some.
Okay. Thank you.
And there is still a fair amount of snow on that upper north fork to come down.
Any additional questions? Ms. Walton?
The only question I have is with regard to the waterproof change order. Are you familiar with that?
Waterproof change order. Okay, that was actually, that was for manhole steps in the old outlet tower. The periodic inspection and evaluation of the valves inside the outlet tower is necessary. And what had been initially installed in the tower were just bent pieces of rebar steel and the water had corroded them where they were originally probably that thick and they were probably just thick. And if somebody my size or even larger go up and down those, you were kind of wondering whether they were really going to hold you. And so it was a safety issue and Mr. Fernandez requested we investigate an alternative. We came up with a poly-coated rebar step that won't ever corrode and was able to get those installed, but that's what the 5,000 is for.
Okay, thank you.
There are a couple of other pending change orders. One was eliminating the bypass outlet around the new replacement where we changed that alignment to no cost, no time change, so there won't be any monetary impact on that one. The second change order is for a change in the spillway pipe. I think probably the big reason the spillway pipe didn't get ordered in time is that the some construction significantly underbid that item. They did $62,000 for that pipe. We had a quote from the same supplier that's making an alternative pipe now. The cost of the specified pipe is $213,000 and that was not installed.
That's a huge under-
It is, and there's been a lot of back and forth on the spillway pipe. I think some construction did not want to eat the full expense of that. We have finally come to terms on a lesser pipe and casing it in concrete, but it's still significant savings to the contractor. And we have asked for $100,000 back from the contractor for that change to the spillway pipe.
Are you confident that change order, the concrete around the pipe is going to be safe, durable?
Yes, yes. It's an equivalent. It is quite a bit more work, but the original pipe was significantly more expensive.
Any other questions?
I would only ask that in collaboration with Mr. Fernandez and with Mr. Aker, that you have a look at that schedule. I know he is on schedule, not criticizing that, but did you take a look at that schedule and have some candid discussions about are there any potential areas where we need to really bird dog the works to keep working toward that target date of having things done by September 5th and drop dead deadline of November 20th?
Right. Exactly. And I actually looked at that today. He's got an updated schedule. I think it's realistic. The only glitch would be if the pipe did not get delivered when it was supposed to or the contractors failed to put it in. But he should make good progress once it's delivered. And we are getting an updated submittal on a placement plan from the pipe supplier. So I suspect-
Mr. Aker, do you have any questions or information?
Not at this time. Mr. Fernandez and I are going to try to go visit the site either later this week or sometime next week.
Mr. Greger, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the report.
You bet.
Keep up the good work.
Okay.
All righty. The next agenda item is number four, and that's council reports. And last time, we started from my left. This time, I will start from my right. Ms. Bolton, do you have anything to share?
Oh, let's see. Recently, I attended the joint meeting with the school board and others, and also the Friday night meeting of the communities that are guarding the school. Since there were others who attended, I will leave those for someone else to report. The one I particularly wanted to report on was last Thursday, which was May 30th. I was pleased to be involved in the Colorado Creative Industries site visit by Margaret Hunt, the executive director of Colorado Creative Industries, and Mario Yule. A group of us spent the afternoon taking these ladies and introducing them to various downtown area merchants, getting them to the proper places and making introductions or interviews. All in all, I feel like we made a very positive impression on them. I'm anxiously awaiting word on our application, and we've been assured that we will know yes or no by June 14th, which is quickly approaching. I'd also like to extend my thanks to all of the others who spent time making their visit a success.
Mr. Shu. I have nothing for the cause. Mr. Mattake?
Yes, as Carol mentioned, I, along with Carol and yourself, did attend that joint meeting with the school board. And at that meeting, there was some discussion about how we can collaborate with each other to provide safe and productive activities for the youth of the community and so forth. I attended that Friday night group as a citizen and also last Thursday, I attended the COG meeting, after which was a presentation by SEDO, which unfortunately we're not even to attend, but COG seems to be like, you know, I'm doing the things they're supposed to do like everyone else with conservative finances and the nature.
Thank you. I'll switch to my far left, and then we'll move to the center.
You're up.
I'll switch around.
The only thing I have to report, Madam Mayor, is that Sunday, I had a great, great spaghetti dinner at the senior citizens. To me, there was a lot of people that attended. Everybody had good food and it was a very relaxing afternoon there where I could sit down and talk and visit with the senior citizens. And it really went nice and I was really happy for the seniors. So other than that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Does the last good- I don't have anything. Ms. Mikes?
I've had conversations, this is regarding saving the Southwest Chief. I've had conversations with Jim V. Hill, a former county commissioner, and Tim Peters, the chair of the County Republican Party. And they've been very helpful in getting us introductions to State Senator Crowder, Representative Tim Door, and U.S. Representative Cory Gardner. We're actually in conversation with State Senator Crowder about setting up a meeting. We're trying to coordinate schedules. I hope Jim V. Hill participates that, participates in that, as well as Tim Peters, and I guess Daryl Bolton has also participated with him. So we hope to get some motion. It's never too early to start squawking about this. In fact, it's probably, it's probably just about the time to do it. And also, conversations with council has been set up, as suggested at the last council meeting, from this coming Tuesday, the 11th, a week from today, at the community center in the daycare room from noon to 1:15 P.M. And then we'll have a work session at 1:30 here in chambers, right after that. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. I have a big list. I want to thank Ms. Yule for being part of the team that came for the creative industries. I was one of the individuals that was interviewed by her. And according to Ms. Marshall, I guess I knocked a home run, and she sent me a very complimentary email saying that my interaction as an elected official with her was good. And so let's keep our fingers crossed that the work of everybody that they interviewed, everybody that they visited with, help pushes us over that tipping point. In addition, I want to be sure and underscore for everybody that on June 11, 2013, at 7:30 P.M., it will be critical for as many citizens as possible to be at the Pioneer Room because discussion about what is going to occur with the Trinidad prison will be the topic. It's called the Trinidad Prison Utilization Committee Meeting. Some believe that unless we have a huge turnout, we may be in jeopardy of losing additional jobs in Los Angeles County, specifically at the Trinidad prison facility. And I'd encourage all of you to make plans now to attend because we really simply cannot afford to lose any more jobs. Also, late this afternoon, and I think Mr. Aker shared it with council members, the second I-25 Economic Development Meeting will be this Friday in Pueblo, Colorado, from 10:00 A.M. to noon. And I believe details in the email you sent Mr. Aker, who said it was going to be at the Chamber of Commerce building?
Yes, it's at the Pueblo Chamber Building, and there's an agenda as well.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure to remind everybody to check that out. I also want to remind members of council that if you have any suggested changes to the charter, that we need to get those to Mr. Aker, probably no later than Thursday this week to give you time to accumulate him.
Ideally tomorrow, but we'll take him whenever we get him, so we get him compiled for Friday's packing.
Very good. And I did attend the CDOT meeting at the courthouse, and it was largely the first of two meetings. It was basically brainstorming and coming up with a wish list of things we would like to see, CDOT projects potentially implemented here in Los Angeles County. And the table I was at, a lot of ideas were put out there, widening the lanes going south to Raton, I guess the shoulders actually, perhaps working on signals for the exit at exit 11, because there's a lot of traffic there, cross-traffic. As a safety concern, we added that to possibility. But there were a myriad of ideas brought forward. And at the next meeting, which will be in July, and I'm sorry that I forgot to note the exact date, but in late July, we'll come back together and they're going to pool together all of the suggestions, and I imagine we'll prioritize them. So those who missed the meeting in June, I would strongly encourage you, and I'll see that an email gets sent out to everybody as a reminder, to participate in the meeting that will occur in July. And that's pretty much it. So I think we're ready to move to the next agenda item, which is Mr. Aker and Mr. Downs, your opportunity to do your reports.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. You took a couple off my list, so that might have been a little quicker.
I didn't mean to steal them.
You did not steal. We just got word this afternoon, and I forwarded to city council, but wanted to bring it up tonight. We got contacted by a representative of Congressman Gardner's office. He is planning on some meetings in the Trinidad area on July 2nd. Currently, they're looking at coming here to City Hall from 10:30 to 11:30. I wanted to check with council if you know your calendars, if that time will work. If you'll let me know tonight if that's fine, or tomorrow, that would be great as well, so we can get back to them to see if we need to shift the time. I think it would be a good, it's the start of a holiday weekend, but I think we've got a meeting still scheduled for that day.
Yeah, July 2nd, that's a Tuesday?
Yes.
You said 10:30 A.M.?
10:30 to 11:30.
I will participate.
Okay, great. They've asked for, they'll be here in chambers, they've asked for council members and department heads, and I'll try to find out if there's a specific thing they want to talk about, if they're just coming to meet with us just to catch up, because it sounds like they're having several meetings around the state at that time.
They need a bullet point to have them.
I know what it is, and actually, I will tag team to your discussion about the Southwest Chief.
That's great. We have not heard from Cory Gardner yet, so that would be a nice answer.
Right. We have asked him to the Southwest Chief Rural Rail Coalition. I think I sent an email to council. Hopefully, you can open it. They didn't bounce back to me, so I think it wasn't too big. Working through Garden City, Kansas, once again submitted a tiger grant for federal funding. The request was for $15 million to start the rail replacement process. We've asked Senators Udall and Bennett to give us support letters. They've indicated they're working with Congressman Cory Gardner to give us a support letter to the U.S. Department of Transportation. So we'll know, you know, down the road if we get that grant, but it's, I think it was a good thing to put in. So I worked the last couple of days and on Saturday morning to help coordinate, trying to get some additional support letters. Council's resolution went into that pact as well. So we are mentioning that loud and clear. And then Rick Klein, the city manager for La Janta, and myself, attended a meeting in Pueblo last Thursday after the ARPA meeting, where they were talking about high-speed rail from Fort Collins to Pueblo. And my question was, is why stop at Pueblo, come all the way down to Trinidad? We echoed the connection of the Southwest Chief, trying to connect people from Los Angeles and Chicago into Denver. And there was actually a gentleman that asked about extending it down into New Mexico as well. Again, this is just a study plan that CDOT's doing, but our encouragement to them, and they encouraged us to talk with our state elected officials, was include Trinidad in that plan now, not as an afterthought. They did not have a good answer for why we weren't included in the first place. I think it's likely because someone picked the boundaries and no one came down and talked to us. So we're trying to get that word out and trying to say, don't forget about, don't forget about us down here in the southeastern corner of the state. Just a couple of upcoming meetings. On Thursday morning at 8:00, the network council meeting is meeting, a group is meeting just to have updates on what's going on. I plan on attending that meeting. And then on the 10th, next Monday, SET is having a meeting in Walsenburg. It's a facilitated meeting to help finalize their planning. I'm going to try to attend that as well. I may be a little late because I've got another meeting at 8:30 that morning. And then in addition, I wanted to remind council or ask council on the building code, if you've got additional comments, we'd like to get, start thinking about when we'd want to get that rescheduled for another work session for an update. So if you've got comments, if you can forward them to myself and Chris Kelly, that would be great. And then maybe at the next work session, we can see when we might want to get that scheduled back to bring back in front of city council. And then coal cart rates. We've got an entry, and I was just curious if there are any council members that want to physically participate in the coal cart race this year. We've had an offer for some trigger baseball players to help us out if we need it, but I thought-
I nominate council members.
But I wanted to offer to council if they want to physically participate. We just, we just need to give them some names on who's going to be on the, on the team. So do I have any takers?
What time is it?
It's at noon on Saturday.
Saturday.
I'll give you an answer by tomorrow.
Okay, that would be great if you want to participate.
We'll let you guys win.
I will volunteer for some other team because I will-
We'll have everybody tank so you guys can win.
How long does it take?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Piece of cake.
And that?
Yeah, that's right.
We got the best coal cart in the county, didn't we?
Yeah, that's right.
We thought we could take a few firefighters away for the chief's-
Okay, good. You have firefighters, they're nice and fit.
Well, we'll try, I'll wait to hear back from the council members, but we'll try to have a combination, because I think since it's a city sponsor, I think we're trying to have some city participation. So I know Ms. Rodolphe is one of our lightest persons, but she doesn't know if she might be here or not. But my wife is in town, but I haven't talked to her about it. She must have been, I guess, the conductor or the-
Might as well be Mr. Hathaway, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Move it forward.
Those are for the meetings. I also wanted to thank and recognize everyone that helped out with the Arts and Cultural Commission and their contribution to our lawn to the north of City Hall with the sculpture. I think it's a wonderful start of an additional, additional public arc around the city. Just want to give council a couple of updates on some things that have been brought up to my attention as far as work items. Kit Carson, the work that was done there, I've learned that the design is complete. And I've got Mr. Kelly, he's going to work with the engineer to get some specifications updated, and we'll hook that out to bid. So as we get that, I'll bring that back to city council when we get the numbers. For recreation, I wanted to alert, everyone probably knows the pool is open. We are missing shade structures. They were not holding up to our winds. We have got some new permanent shade structures on order. They're metal roofed with columns. Those, he's been working with the supplier for the past month or so, trying to get them scheduled in. Looks like it might be four weeks out, but temporarily, he's getting some pop-up tent-type structures to be able to provide some shade out there. And he has opened up and put a sign on the door. We've got lap swims in the morning, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I know the one individual that I was aware of that had asked about the lap swim, and I put a phone call into that person. I've not heard back. We're going to see how it goes. And then there's also a suggestion, and from the senior citizens, about some sort of water exercise program. To really do that properly, you need someone that's certified. Our volunteer that works with the seniors on the senior silver sneakers program wants to get certified, but the next certification is not until September. However, in the meantime, I've asked if there are some little tidbit exercises if seniors want to come in that they might be able to do on their own that are safe, that they can start participating. Council member Bolton, at the last meeting, asked about the little crosswalk signs. My understanding is we had one that was not up. I talked to Street and Bridge today. It had originally been in front of Beach Street. That seems to be a little narrow in that area. So I suggested we think about putting it up at Convent Street in Maine. And then he and I will take, tour around the downtown area and see if there's some other areas where we might want to locate some, and then we'll have to get those ordered.
I think there's some other areas where we definitely could use-
If you would like to send me any suggestions, that would be great as well. And then potholes. City staff is starting to repair potholes in some of the street cuts. They've been working with the asphalt plant north of the city to try to coordinate when he's producing asphalt, because it's more cost-effective to use his material. So this week, you should see a lot of activity around potholes, and we'll just continue that throughout the, throughout the year, but we're trying to coordinate those efforts as well.
Louis, in the back, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, the installation of crosswalk signs, is that what I heard?
Installation of crosswalk signs.
That should probably be coordinated with our downtown CDOT project, because a lot of those areas are going to be ripped up and redone. So it would make sense to coordinate.
Well, certainly, these are the temporary signs that go in the middle of the street.
On potholes, I think I shared with you that a couple of comments about the Los Angeles Bridge.
Yes, I'll make sure that's on the list. Oh, lastly, I sent you out an email. Our illustrious fire chief has decided that 31 years is enough time.
No, you need to stay.
And I did try to twist his arm, but he and I will start the process. And I, updating his job description, which hasn't been updated since 2008, we're likely to have some internal candidates, but I think I will open it up to the outside as well to see if there's anyone that might want to come into the community. He and I will start that process. I think he would like to become retired in the August timeframe, but he's agreed to help me through some of the transition as well. So with that, I will conclude my report if there's any questions.
Could I ask you, how are you doing with finding our finance director and our public works person?
I had- I have made an offer for a finance director, provided him the candidates and additional information. I actually called him before the meeting tonight. I've not talked with him this week. So we're in that negotiation discussion stage. And then with the public works director, finalizing the information and working to get it on like the APA side, CML side, and ICMA side as well to get that advertised. Probably be open for about a month. I'm also going to, since I'll be at CML in a couple of weeks, I'm going to ask on my fellow city managers if they've got some good candidates as well. So it'll be a combination, public works director and utility director and working with Mr. Fernandez, so.
When do you expect my cure back from our candidate for the finance?